Approval of the agenda as presented, please. Moved by Counselor Berger. Any corrections? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. From our last regular council meeting, we received an item of correspondence from the Capitol Regional District Board regarding the establishment of a regional transportation system. And the intent there was to introduce the correspondence to council, and we would deliberate on it further this evening, and that would also allow us the opportunity, if we so desired, to receive a presentation from CRD staff or the Select Committee. Both myself and Counselor Casper have served on the Select Committee, but I think it's just better in this regard to get a full... It's difficult to advocate for something and ask questions about it and question it at the same time, so just the opportunity to have CRD staff here present, I think, works well, and that was the motion that council passed. So, good evening and welcome to our CRD staff, and perhaps if you could give a brief introduction and then get into your presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor Tate and councilors. We're very excited to be here today to be able to talk to you about some of the work that we've been doing towards the regional transportation service. My name's Kevin Lorette. I'm the General Manager of Planning and Protective Services. With me on my left is Sina Bay. She's the Senior Manager of Regional and Strategic Planning. And I also have John Hicks with me, who's our Senior Transportation Planner. So just to put a little bit of context into this before we start into the presentation, several years of work have gone into work towards our regional transportation plan that culminated, I guess it was 2015, when we actually got the board adopted the regional transportation plan, and that was developed in collaboration with the CRD, the local government, Ministry of Transportation, and B.C. Transit. And there was extensive stakeholder engagement involved in that process. One of the key recommendations of the regional transportation plan was to develop a transportation service. In March of this year, the board asked staff to draft a transportation service bylaw, and we also, at the same time, also drafted a requisition policy, and that was in both the bylaw and the policy were included in the package that was sent to the municipalities. Staff brought forward a report in October on the options for obtaining, sent to the electors for a new service. And at that meeting, the board asked us to engage with the local government municipalities and talk to them about what the proposed service would do. And our next steps in the process will be to summarize the input that we've received from our engagement process and then report back to the board. And the board at that time will really have to make a decision on whether or not they want to make any changes to the proposed bylaw and how they want to proceed with it. And so they'll be, we'll be reporting back in the new year on that. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Bay, who's going to walk through a couple slides for you.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Kevin alluded to, we're here to talk about the regional transportation service, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about the current situation and some of the reasons why a transportation service is being proposed, what we think could be in the transportation service, and then talk a little bit about next steps. So, the CRD board did determine that a transportation service was a strategic priority for the board for this term of office. And it was really in response to a growing demand from the public for more coordinated transportation planning. So really, regardless of where people sit on the amalgamation question, there's a strong sense in the community that transportation is a significant issue, and it's an issue that really transcends any single municipal boundary. The reason for that is, in fact, that about 58% of travel in this region is intermunicipal. That means that people are crossing our municipal boundaries for their various destinations to quite a significant degree, and that's the average across the region. The average for SUK is a little bit higher than that. The consequence of that is that transportation is costing us, is costing us in terms of time. You and SUK would know that more than many in the region in terms of the significant amount of times you spend in your vehicles for any trips that go outside your municipal boundaries. It costs people money, and it also has environmental impacts. It's therefore probably no great surprise that the transportation system as a whole in the region gets a fairly low grade. These are the grades that came through the Victoria Vital Signs survey this year. You can see that transportation got a C-plus grade. That is consistent with what it got last year, a slight decrease from the grade in 2014. So the message there really is that transportation has a fairly low grade in terms of satisfaction, and that in fact, it seems to be becoming worse. And in fact, it's going to become even worse than that. Our transportation planning work indicates that by 2038, there will be over 120,000 more peak period trips each day than there were in 2011. So if we think it's bad today, it is going to get worse, and we all know that none of us like to sit in traffic, like shown on that photo. So that brings us to one of the realities, which is that SUK residents do rely on the entire regional network to get where they need to go, not just on the roads within SUK. So even if many trips can be accomplished within SUK, for very few people would it be all the trips. We know that SUK residents travel outside of SUK for work. Many residents are lucky enough to be able to work within the boundaries of SUK, but you can see from this map that the darker colored areas are the ones where SUK residents go most frequently to work. So although SUK is a primary destination, so too is Victoria and the Sanage Peninsula and Langford. So many in this room are probably well accustomed with needing to go to work in those other areas. Other people come to SUK to some degree, but most of your residents or most of your employees come from the SUK region or from the SUK municipality. Some of the major destinations across the region that require travel, hospitals, universities, colleges, major shopping trips, require travel not just on some of the highways, but also once you get into the core areas, the full road network. This is an extract from a regional transportation plan, which shows the intermunicipal road network, what we call the multimodal network. Congestion on any of those roads becomes problematic in that it creates delays. And the second reality I'd just like to spend some time on is that SUK currently has no way to advocate for or contribute to transportation improvements on any of those networks there that are outside of SUK's boundaries. And likewise, there's really no ability for the rest of the region to advocate for SUK when it comes to asking for improvements to Highway 14. And imagine in the future, there's desire for an upgrading or replacement of a key bridge along Highway 14, or the Highway 14 itself. Wouldn't it be nice to have some others in the region acknowledging that that is in fact a road network that benefits SUK, but also benefits and is an essential part of the regional network as a whole? So the result is that because there's no way to advocate for effective traffic improvements elsewhere, SUK residents get stuck in traffic. The third reality is that the region as a whole is unable to speak with a united voice to attract external funding. So when each individual municipality goes forward to the province or to the federal government and says, "We've got this great project within SUK or within Sanage or Victoria," name the municipality, that voice is a single voice advocating to senior government as opposed to a voice that is joined by all the others in the municipality. And as a result, our voice is not as effective in this region as we believe it would be if the region as a whole spoke with one voice. And so we may be losing out to other municipalities that speak with a more united voice. So for those reasons, we have been discussing a CRD transportation service. It has been discussed extensively at the CRD with both the Transportation Select Committee that you've had representation at here through your council, and also at the board level. And specifically, what could a transportation service do? Well, a service could collaboratively identify regional priorities, collaboratively fund regional priorities, and advocate and leverage for funding from other partners. And why is that so important? Well, we feel that that's so important because those are essentially the levers that will help get the desired transportation system in this region. So if you can see that big ball on the screen, is the desired is representative of the desired transportation system, and we can't really get that off the ground and running, we don't feel, unless we can in fact use those levers represented by the green arrows, and those come through the shared priorities, the pooled dollars, and getting external dollars to help out. So we recognize that there is some nervousness in the region as to the prospects of a regional transportation service. In our other presentations, our Transportation Select Committee Chair has reminded councils that it's important to remember that the reason this is being discussed is because people have asked for it in the region, whether it's businesses or it's residents, there's been a recognition that regional involvement in transportation is important. Having said that, it is understood that there are potential concerns about a transportation service. I'll just spend a few minutes talking about some of those. One of the concerns we've heard is that it'll cost too much. So as part of that, I just want to respond that the funding approach to this is very negotiable. Just because there's a transportation service doesn't mean that it has to cost any more than what we're spending today. At its very bare minimum, a transportation service may just in fact be the staff resources and the financial resources that we have in place at the CRD today. It could just mean consolidating our regional parks function in another division and the regional planning function that we have today. And even doing that would give us more of a voice as a region than what we have today, but that does still involve a new service. And the new service then would at least give us a voice as a region and have the ability for us to go to the senior levels of government and ask for additional funding. So if the concern is, "Don't spend any more money," the message back to the CRD could be that we're interested in a service, but we just don't want to grow it beyond what we have in place today. Secondly, if the concerns are about money, an important thing to remember is that by working together, we may in fact be able to attract more money from outside this region, which will actually help each of our regional taxpayers have to pay less for the new infrastructure. Another concern that we've heard is that we simply won't have enough of a say. We're going to get drowned as a fairly small municipality in the voices of the larger region, and that's of concern. So in response to that, I just want to acknowledge that the governance model that pertains to the transportation service can absolutely be tweaked to respond to those concerns. There are all manner of models out there that can talk about how you weight the votes, how you potentially set up subregional bodies. All of that is something that can be discussed and considered by the CRD. What this is about is about where your residents are traveling. Your residents, we know from our transportation survey data, are definitely traveling outside just the boundaries of SUK. They are concerned, as are residents in many other parts of the region, as to what that looks like. They want quick, safe, pleasant access to the road network. They want good access by other means of transportation as well. This is about stretching limited dollars. The more we can attract from outside this region, the more the dollars are stretched, and it's about giving the region a louder voice with senior levels of government. So moving forward, we're interested in hearing whether you would like to work with the broader region to solve the region's transportation challenges. We know that the options that we have for addressing problems today are quite limited. Imagine for a minute that there's a transportation program or project that all the partners want to deliver collectively together, that there's unanimous agreement, that there's a particular type of initiative that we want to pursue as a region, it has to do with transportation. We couldn't do that today because we don't have a transportation service. So one of the responses we've had about, "Well, everything's working just fine today. Why do we need to worry about doing this?" Because I think sometimes when we're in positions of leadership, whether it's council or staff, it's incumbent upon us to also plan for the future and imagine what might happen down the road that we'd want to respond to very quickly. A transportation service would allow us to do that. This whole process takes at least a year to go from the beginning to the end, so it's possible that opportunities could come our way to work together on a project, and by the time we actually get all the things in order to take advantage of that opportunity will have passed us by. By setting up a transportation service, that wouldn't happen. The transportation service bylaw that was sent to you and presumably part of your packages is a starting point for discussion. It is drafted to be probably at its most comprehensive, imagining that we'd be wanting to get feedback on what the most comprehensive package could look like. We know that there is likely going to be pushback on that package. We've already heard it from other municipalities. So what we'd like to hear from you is, is there any level of a transportation service that you would be excited to entertain and be willing to support? Because even in its most basic form, as I alluded to earlier on, I think there's strong value in a transportation system. And the purpose of us having this discussion today is to hear your input as to what is of concern specifically to SUK, because what we'll do with that input is to take your input and the input from every other municipality and electoral area, and we will in fact report back to the Transportation Select Committee with recommendations for how the bylaw can be tweaked in order to respond to those concerns. Ultimately, the bylaw can be written in many different ways. It can be well able to address concerns that come through this process, and really what we need to hear is what you would like to see in a transportation service. So that concludes our presentation. We'd love to hear from you as to whether you see fit to support the establishment of a transportation service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bay and Mr. Lorette. Questions or comments from councilors, both on the presentation, on the materials you've received? Any thoughts? There is a request and a draft motion in here of support that's been put out by the Chair. Any comments, Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I really appreciate you taking the time to come out this evening driving Highway 14 in the dark. I have to admit, I'm very leery. I was a bus user for seven years, more than some, but nowhere near as many people in SUK who have commuted in and out of the area over the years. My feeling is, is that when it comes to the CRD, I see this as another level of bureaucracy, and I say that with all due respect. You know, your bylaw, you take a look at it, yes, it may be the maximum, but you're talking about $10 million, you know, with a tax levy on property. I think for me, my concern is when I think of a sort of a transportation sort of planning, you know, I get worried by TransLink, and I know that's over on the lower mainland, but, you know, you come here tonight, so I've got very limited information. And, you know, so I appreciate your optimism, but I think it's quite... I'm not convinced. So if I can, I had a couple of questions. So having been a huge B.C. Transit user, how does B.C. Transit fit into this? Because we've just got our mayor on the B.C. Transit Commission to have that voice for SUK, and I'm concerned that something like this would take that away from us. And, you know, you talk about weighted votes and all that, and we're back to the same we are with parks, like trying to get access to our parks here in the District of SUK.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the B.C. Transit is not part of this. In fact, the legislation at present doesn't allow the CRD to play a role in transit, so before the CRD could take a role in transit, the legislation would need to change. It's not part of what we're entertaining at this stage. It's not to say that it couldn't ever if the legislation were to change and if the direction were to change, but it's not part of what we're contemplating right now.
Okay. And the reason I bring it up, because it is listed, is by, you know, an incremental approach. So it's like we're starting to finally get a bit of a voice with B.C. Transit, and I am concerned about the longer-term implications. I think in theory, it sounds really good, but over the last five years, I've found, you know, a lot of decisions that are made at the CRD table, I don't think work for the people of SUK. And so that was one of my concerns. Just another, and I guess when I've read through this, I've taken lots of notes, and I want to give others a chance to speak to, but I think one of the other things you made a comment about was taking funding out of the parks. And one of the things that I'm mindful of is that there was a decision to change something on the lockside trail where you were going to pave it, and horses weren't going to be allowed to be used on it to make it more cycle-friendly, to get people to be able to take their bikes into town. So those sort of things get me worried about those kind of decisions, because I'd hate to see the Galloping Goose start to turn into a bit of a cyclist freeway. Our community enjoys taking their children there during the day and their animals, so there's a lot of things I have questions about, and I just don't have enough time this evening, but I do appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Other members of council? Counselor Casper?
Well, as a past member of the Transportation Select Committee, and as I have to admit, one of the architects of the bylaw and the process that we've arrived to today, I think there's an opportunity for our municipality and others to be part of a solution and not just be the creators of problems. We're a growing community, and what comes with that is more traffic on Highway 14, in particular through Langford and Callwood. And there's portions of Langford and Callwood that, in my opinion, need to be upgraded to wider status. That is not going to happen with SUK's voice alone. It could happen with the voices of other jurisdictions. The way the bylaw's been written under the service provisions on page 27 of our agenda package are pretty clear. Most of these services are currently being operated under the auspices of the Regional Planning and Protective Services Division, but this provides an opportunity for a more clearly defined service separate from that division. It's a lateral transfer of existing staff, and I would stand to be corrected, but that's how it was explained. And that's the position that Chair Bryson and myself took when I was the Vice Chair of the Committee. We did not want to see budget creep or scope creep at the CRD. We were very adamant in the very beginning. We don't want to see a building of a brand-new bureaucracy. What we were trying to address was a convenient way for all municipalities to put their heads together through the CRD staff, and I have to stress, existing staff, so that we don't continue to lose out on major funding opportunities from senior levels of government. You have to appreciate, the Capitol Regional District could have the opportunity to actually fairly compete with other larger jurisdictions across the country for federal funding. Currently, we do not have that opportunity. What we see occurring is municipalities like Sanage, Victoria, Langford, View Royal, et cetera, and even SUK, competing for money individually in many respects, a very piecemeal fashion, that do not address the current transportation needs in this community, do not address any future needs that we can expect based on our growth projections, Langford's growth projections, and other communities' growth projections. I'm a strong advocate. I don't apologize for it. In some respects, there's many things I don't like about the CRD, but there are some things that they do do well. And I think that from a planning perspective and trying to get people together to speak as a collective voice, to go after badly needed federal money, to support things like light rail, enhanced bus lanes throughout the region, to move the traffic that Counselor Ray spoke about, and to make sure that we have a more livable community as a whole. So I don't want to belabor, the time is pressing, but I'm very supportive, and if we don't get a resolution tonight, I hope that council members will consider this as a viable and very important service. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Casper. Counselor Parkinson, Ben Berger?
Through Your Worship, I was just wondering, how do you see SUK benefiting through this?
Through the Chair, I think it's really through those realities that I spoke about earlier on in my presentation in terms of giving SUK a voice that is bolstered by the rest of the region. And so as you advocate for some of the transportation infrastructure that's critical to you, whether it's within SUK or it's just outside SUK's boundaries or a little bit further, it's really not so much perhaps about where the transportation infrastructure is located as about the degree to which your residents and businesses are dependent on that transportation infrastructure. It's really about giving you a megaphone, in essence, through the region, advocating for those pieces of infrastructure and services that are necessary for your residents as opposed to calling out into the wind, in essence, against every other competing need that's there in the region right now.
Counselor Berger?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, my thoughts are similar to my colleague with Counselor Ray. For me, it feels like yet another added layer of governance. I don't see a huge benefit for SUK. I feel that the rest of the region, the core, the peninsula, they're not troubled by SUK's transportation problems. We're based on Highway 14, and that's where our congestion happens, with people going to and from work. Yes, it funnels into Langford, Callwood, and then eventually into town, but as we all know, that's a provincially-owned highway. So our issue, I feel, is with the province. We need to talk to the province from this table to let them know of where our congestion and where our problem spots are. I don't think anyone out in Sanage or Sydney or even in the downtown core have any thoughts strongly or against Highway 14 because they don't travel that road. If we were a core community and we were in View Royal or Oak Bay or Victoria, then absolutely, I think the idea of this and the premise of this would be wonderful because they all travel those streets together. We're isolated, we're based on Highway 14, so for us, I just don't see the benefit. We have been successful in getting some grants through the province to help with Highway 14. I just don't see a regional table really helping the needs of the congestion that SUK has.
Thank you, Counselor Berger. For myself, I see the benefits of this when I look at the day-to-day activities of our residents. I drove to the airport today, it took me 45 minutes to get there, it took me two hours and 20 minutes to get back. There was no accident, but it was just congestion, congestion, congestion all the way through. And so when I look at residents, our workers, we can do a lot as a municipality, and we need to continue doing work to create decent work here in SUK, decent medical services here in SUK, and to always advocate to the province for improvements to Highway 14. That is sort of our role, and it's something we always have to do. But in the short and medium and long term, the university is where it is, the Royal Jubilee and the General are where they are, the majority of provincial jobs are all located downtown, the shopping, like it's just everyone is moving around. And so that's where, when you see where people are going, things like an enhanced bus lane all the way, it needs to go all the way from where it ends at Mayfair all the way through to Uptown, you know, and that sort of infrastructure, the municipalities have to work together to make that happen. Light rail, as Counselor Casper talked about. Transit, I do agree, needs to be left alone for the short term. When former Mayor Evans was on the Transit Commission, we saw improvements to transit occur, and then they've sort of fallen apart since then, and I'm hoping to improve that in the short term. But I think as the service develops, we can see how the provincial, I wouldn't support provincial legislation changing now, maybe in the future it can, depending on how things go, but our residents need access to places, and a two-hour commute is not, is just not reasonable. Forty minutes is lucky on a good day, and that's, I suppose, is the average for the region. In terms of, it's just the coordination, and so I do think the voice, it's about the region competing with Calgary or Edmonton or other large cities to get the funding that they need, and it has to be done. The South Island is going to be a very desirable place to be. SUK is the best place to be, so there's always going to be a demand to shift out here, but we're not shifting fast enough in terms of having what our residents need located here, and some of it will be impossible. A hospital is a long time away for us, unfortunately. So my concern with this is the governance piece. I don't want SUK to get lost in a weighted system, and I know there's only certain, when the real weighted vote kicks in, but even when it's equal vote, that's one voice of 24. So that concerns me particularly when you have, you know, everything that we're fighting for, whether it's getting clean water here and it's a tie vote, close to being defeated or whatever. I mean, we have to see improvements that benefit our residents, we can't get lost. So it's how the governance piece work, it's how memberships on certain committees work so that our residents don't fall further behind than where they are. We don't want to become even more delayed because something in the core needs to be addressed first. So it's the governments and how that gets resolved, I think, over the year is going to be very important for myself. But both Counselor Casper and I sit on the board and will be advocating strongly for our representation there. So is there anything further? There is a... There is a suggested action in the materials. If council is not comfortable moving that, then I would like to know what other motion you would like to put forward. It's on the green pages. Actually, before we look at any motion, we do have a space for any public input. So the motion, just so you know, let me, sorry, it's on the back page, there's no page numbers, but it basically says, "Sook municipality supports the establishment of a regional transportation service through the Capital Regional District." So that is a suggested motion, or you can think of another one. But in the interim, I would like to see if any members of the public would like to speak. There's just a question from our, handoff from our deputy corporate officer. Ms. Lures?
Thank you, Your Mayor, Your Worship. Just to let you know that it's also on the agenda, the regular agenda tonight, under unfinished business. So you can choose to make a recommendation from the committee of the whole to council, or you can let it lie and deal with it in the regular agenda.
Okay. So there's some options there, and then the regular agenda will also allow a public input opportunity as well. But I'll call now to see if there's any, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Where would be the best place for a member of the public to?
[Laughter]
Sorry. Actually, our deputy corporate officer has turned her microphone around. Is that agreeable with a member of the public? So then that way, staff may be able to respond to the question? Thank you, Ms. Lures, for being so accommodating, though I still need your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Ellen Lures, 5526 Sook Road. I just want to say, initially, Gallardi had set up the CRD to deal with transportation only, but unfortunately, the CRD has taken over everything and not dealt with transportation. Transportation is a major issue. As the mayor said, it took her two hours to get back here. It used to take me six to seven minutes to get into Sook, it took me 25 minutes, including waiting to get out of the driveway. The regional growth strategy is under the CRD's control, which controls us, controls our traffic, controls our roads, our transportation, where we have water, et cetera. We have our own, Langford has turned down the proposal that you're proposing, and we have our own OCP that we're working on. Our own OCP discusses transportation. We will look after our own transportation issues, or we can make recommendations through our OCP. And in the past, having served on the OCP, light rail transit was a big discussion. And until the communities come together and start working on doing light rail transit, there's no point. All this discussion about stopping the oil tankers, stopping us from driving, et cetera, et cetera, riding bicycles, well, don't pave over more of the galloping goose for bicycles, because that's where our light rail transit should go. And more people are not going to be cycling. I'm not going to cycle to Sook, from Sook to Victoria, and neither are many people with their children. That's impossible. And I think people have to be realistic here. And the light rail transit, the 18-inch gauge electric rail would transport people quite quickly into the city. And every other country, every other city has increased their transportation on rail. Back east, there's more railways back there than anywhere. Here, we close them down. In Western Canada, every railway's been shut down instead of increasing our rail. And if we want to move the traffic and move it in a responsible manner, rail is a way to do it. But that has to come through our OCPs and all the other municipalities, I'm sure, have said the same thing. And there has been the work with the E&amp;N group trying to get that rail in, and I know it's under investigation now. But CPR, Vancouver Island was signed into the Constitution to the Dominion of Canada with a promise of a railway to Vancouver Island and one that would run to perpetuity. And I think that's where we should be focusing our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lures. If I may just clarify, and the part of, this is raised by a councillor as well, about the lockside being paved, that was put forward by a cycling group. However, the CRD staff did consider the needs of all the users in the area, and that has been left as an unpaved surface particularly because of the need for the equestrians. And so they have been taking in all of the feedback from all of the groups and not just catering to one. Where predominantly people use it to cycle, it's paved. But in other areas like here, where we look for a more rural recreational, it's been left like that. So I think that is an example about how various stakeholders and various areas of the region's needs are being met for unique circumstances. So I'd just like to add that. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this matter at this time? Okay. So in terms of council sitting at committee of the whole, would you like to put a motion forward now, or would you like to wait until it hits the regular agenda part? Councillor Casper, I see?
Yeah, I think in fairness, we'd let the dust settle here, and then we could deal with it later on in our regular council meeting.
Okay, so you'd like to have the correspondent wait until you do?
Yes, I think so.
And that will give the councillor some time to contemplate as well. So thank you very much, CRD staff. I appreciate your time, and please drive back safely. Thank you very much. Okay, so on that note, I will call for an adjournment, please, of the committee of the whole. Moved by Councillor Parkinson. All those in favor, those motions carried. Okay, just take a short recess, just so we can switch.